Good morning, and welcome to this June the twenty eighth special meeting of the Chesterfield County Council. It's nine AM, so we'll call this meeting to order at this time. We'll call on Vice Chairman Anderson. We'll have oath, and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord our Lord, thank you so much for bringing us together today. Lead us to right decisions and right actions. Make us mindful of the decisions that we're making, that they are most beneficial to our citizens, our employees. Bless us as we go further. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which extends one nation under God, in which there is justice for all.
Uh, when need to adopt the agenda, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Mr. Conklin, Ms. Smallwood, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, public hearings. Uh, we'll start with the Walmart fee and lieu ordinance, public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Some of it, Chairman.
Mr. Rivers, Mr. Conklin. Yes, got a vote, a motion to second, is any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing is now open. Is anyone here wish to address counsel on this ordinance? Hearing none, uh, I assume the same two will make the motion in the second to close the public hearing.
Some of it, Chairman.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Okay, we'll move down to the twenty-three, twenty-four cash rural fire department budget ordinance. Public hearing, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Some of it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Burns, Mr. Curtis, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, public hearing is now open. Anyone wish to address counsel on this ordinance? Hearing none, I assume the same two will, um, make the motion to, in the second to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, public hearing is now closed. We'll move down to the twenty-three, twenty-four Harris Creek Rural Fire Department Budget Ordinance. Public hearing, is there a motion to open the public hearing? Ms. Burns, Mr. Curtis, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, public hearing is now open. Anyone wish to address counsel on this ordinance? Hearing none, I assume that the same two will make the motion in the second to close it. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, public hearing is now closed. So we move down to alligator. Rural Fire Department Budget, Budget Ordinance, public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? Mr. Ben. Mr. Ben, Mr. Con- um, Smallwood, is any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, public hearing is now open. Anyone wish to address counsel on this ordinance? Hearing none, I assume the same two will close. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, public hearing is now closed. Move down to twenty-three, twenty-four, the general fund budget ordinance, public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? Ms. Burns. Mr. Curtis, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, public hearing is now open. Anyone wish to address counsel on this ordinance? Hearing none, I assume the same two will make the motion in the second to close it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, public hearing is now closed. We'll move down to item F, the ordinance authorizing conveyance of real property to High Point Volunteer Fire Department, public hearing. Is there a motion to open the-
Some of it, Chairman, second.
Mr. Miller, Mr. Rivers. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, public hearing is now- Anyone wish to address counsel? Hearing none, I assume the same two will make the motion in the second to close the public hearing.
Some of it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, public hearing is now closed. Okay, we'll move down to item five, ordinance reading and resolution. Start with A, Walmart fee and lieu of ordinance, third reading. Is there a motion to approve the third reading?
Some of it.
Second.
Mr. Rivers, Ms. Anderson, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We move down to item B, twenty-three, twenty-four cash rural fire department budget ordinance, third reading. Is there a motion to approve third reading? Ms. Burns, Mr. Conklin, is any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Move down to item C, twenty-three, twenty-four Harris Creek Rural Fire Department Budget Ordinance, third reading. Is there a motion to approve third reading?
Some of it, second.
Mr. Curtis, Ms. Burns, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Move down to item D, twenty-three, twenty-four alligator rule, order fire department, uh, rural fire department. Getting, uh, redundant here. Third reading of this ordinance, is there a motion? Mr. Conklin. Mr. Smallwood, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. We'll move down to item E, twenty-three, twenty-four general fund budget ordinance, third reading. Is there a motion to open the third reading?
Some of it.
Ms. Burns, Mr. Curtis, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, we move down to item F, ordinance authorizing the conveyance of the real property to High Point Volunteer Fire Department, third reading.
Some of it, Chairman, second.
Mr. Rivers, Mr. Miller, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, we'll move down to item six, um, items submitted by council, rural initiative grant, Ms. Anderson.
I hope I can be more articulate with this than I was with my prayer. I practiced it the whole way over here and then I lost my word. But anyway, okay, so the rural initiative, um, grant opportunity is what I'm bringing before you today. I first heard about it at the rural summit in Beaufort, and it's a pot of money that's come to, um, rural counties in South Carolina. And it's a real opportunity, um, it's five hundred thousand dollars or up to five hundred thousand dollars. But the two caveats are, you have to have a plan ready, and you have to have the matching money ready as well. And so, you know, those are both very challenging when you're talking about five hundred thousand dollars. Um, I got a call a couple of weeks ago from Department of Commerce saying that they still had some of this money available. Was there anything that we had? So I called around, and Charal does have, um, both of those. They have a plan and they have matching money for an expansion of their recreation complex. So I called back Department of Commerce to see if that would be something that they would support. And it sounds like it would be a good fit, so, um, I asked how, you know, how do we go about that? And they said, what we need to do is for council to say that we are in support of applying for the grant, and that we would assign the grant to Charal, because we certainly don't want our folks, you know, writing a grant or being in charge of the implement, implementation of the grant. But, um, you know, that's really all I have for you is asking for us as a group to support Charal applying for this rural initiative grant and for us to assign it to them. I'm happy to answer any questions.
There's, there's no cost to the county.
No, there's no cost to the county. That's the beautiful part about it is that the five hundred thousand dollars comes to the county, but, you know, we're not on the hook for anything. Charal would be.
Yeah, so we're, we're looking at five hundred thousand dollars, and the town has the magic of five hundred thousand.
Right, mhm, up to five hundred. The town's needs is greater than the five hundred, you know, but they, this certainly helps them to get where they need to be.
This is in their parks and recreation?
It's for a recreational complex, um, expansion, right? They're gonna move a field from, in town, there's a ball field in the middle of town that is not with all the other ball fields, so they'll move that one out, and then they're gonna expand pickleball and tennis. And it actually helps with, um, economic development, because with the pickleball courts, it's a substantial number of them, and it would be enough to have small tournaments.
Okay, is that in form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
I was gonna make the motion, I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on this?
I was just gonna say, is there, um, i- is there any way we reached out to any other of the municipalities or anything in the county to make sure that they didn't have something similar that they wanted to put?
I did not reach out to anybody else, because Rob was at the con- this is the beautiful thing about going to these conferences, is that you learn about these programs that are available, and Rob was there, Libby was there, and I was there. And, um, Rob is, yeah, very progressive, and I knew that he may already have something in place. So I, I didn't, I did speak to the one in Main Street in Pageland, but no one else had a draw, a, a plan in place.
So this is, Charal has it, they, I was told they had everything in line, you know, to get started on this, they were gonna do it in phases.
That's right, and this just expedites, you know, their opportunity. So they weren't gonna do it in phases, this just helps them out. And I, I saw the plans, and, um, they've assured me that they have the match money.
Okay, is any other discussion?
So the answer to that question was, no other municipalities were contacted except Charal, I'm just trying to understand. Since the county is funding, is backing this, so to speak, as a county, did we contact any other municipalities to, to see if?
I did not. I was told that time is of the essence, and he said, I cannot park this money. You've got, I've gotta have an answer as soon as possible. And I, I just personally knew that Rob was there at that, and I didn't contact him about the recreational complex. I just said, do you know of anything, so?
But, I guess my, my question would be, uh, would, since it would be a, a council-supported thing, would we need to, the right, would the right thing to do, we need to reach out to all municipalities and say, you know, before we just jump on one ship, is there anything that? I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not against what's in Charal, but I don't want other municipalities to feel like they were left out uh, from an opportunity that they weren't aware of.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's up to you guys. We might miss the opportunity if we don't.
What is the time window?
It was two weeks ago, actually, you know, so, but I knew that we were having a special council meeting. I mean, if you guys know of, if, I don't know what to do with it other than present this to you.
Is this an annual grant, one-time thing?
Mm, it's, who knows? I mean, right now, it's, yeah.
It's available now?
Right, and they, I don't know that they would divide it up. I think it's really supposed to be something substantial.
When Mary first brought it to my attention, I just, probably should have reached out, but I just, I doubt very seriously anybody else that got plans that are ready to go and has got five hundred thousand dollars to match it.
That's the ca- those are the two caveats, and that's what makes it so difficult, and that's why Libby, I'm sure, I mean, we don't have a plan for anything in the county or money, you know, that would be specifically, um, fit the categories of the grant.
Ms. Anderson, this is a public park.
It is.
Anybody can use it.
Mhm.
From any part of the county whatsoever.
Right.
Personally, I don't have a problem with it, as long as we, my children have played down there on their, in their public parks, and they're very, very nice. Uh, like, what is it, Arrowhead or?
Arrowhead, right.
Beautiful, beautiful place, and, uh, it's not just limited to the citizens of Charal, but the citizens of Chesterfield County.
Right.
Thank you.
I've seen the plans for the park, and it's a nice project.
Have you seen them?
It is, it's, it's nice, and I think it's something the county will enjoy. Having said that, I think we've gotta do a better job of reaching out to municipalities, 'cause that's, that's-
Well, I think this-
Target we don't need.
Yeah, I think this came about through Mary's relationship with the economic development people in Columbia, in fact, I know it did.
And I'm not trying to shut any other town out. I mean, I, I just, he asked me if I knew of anything, and I reached out to someone who I knew would know, who had been, who had been to the summit, who understood what it's about. I think we need to make sure that people from other towns and, and all of us, you know, continue to be involved in things like the rural summit, too. I did speak to the Main Street Development Director in Pageland. I didn't say specifically, do you have five hundred thousand dollars for a project? But we talked about Main Street Pageland and what was going on.
Off question. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Um, items submitted by staff, county radio coverage, Mr. Ubanks, we'll turn that over to you.
Okay, at the last meeting, um, we had a quote from Communications Technology on putting a repeater up at the high, on the High Point Tower, which is Sand Hill Telephone, uh, Tower. They give us the green light to, to do so, and they've actually done some checking, and we asked them to, if they would, to climb the tower and with using a handheld radio to see what kind of reception they got around. I asked them to come today, I spoke with Justin a couple of days ago, and he said it was very, I mean, they, it was a good signal and all throughout the dead areas that they've been having. He said he sent Spence and them around to do so, so I asked Spence this morning, he and the sheriff, would they be here to back that up? And he said that he vouched for them, and correct me if I'm wrong, Spence, that it did work very well. Now that being said, that was done with a handheld radio on the, on the tower. This will be a repeater that will be twenty foot taller and have any more, much more power.
That was using a six inch antenna off of a handheld radio. Antenna would be put up to be twenty foot, um, and you're looking, going from four watts to a hundred watts.
To a hundred watts, so it can only be better, in, in, in my opinion, you know, is that correct, Justin? And the Sheriff's Department was pleased with the outcome, with what they, the test showed. That being said, I've got every, every scenario we can possibly think of with towers and all that y'all got in front of you there. The one that hits, that I feel like you can see the best, if you'll go to the second page, the one that says Five Mile Rings. It's five red small circles throughout the county. The repeater that we're looking at, we've already put in place on this map. If you'll see, the only weak spot I foresee on this map would be between Mackbee and Charal. I feel like we are one repeater and one tower away. Sand Hill has a re, a tower dead in the middle of this section right here, and I feel like we one repeater away from having those guys a, a good system that they can talk throughout this county with. The other thing with the quote, the quote came in at thirty-three thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety cents. We still are looking at, they'll need a building to put the equipment in. I talked with Justin yesterday, they actually called for a pad. Our guys can build a building, I asked them whether it's okay if we build a building, 'cause we can build it cheaper and better than what we can buy, I feel like. And he said that would be fine, so our guys could build a building for the material to go in. We're also looking, not quite sure, we want to see, is it capable of tying in with Sand Hill's generator? Y'all know if that generator's big enough, Justin, to?
I don't know what kind of load the Sand Hills have on their side. I know that they have a hundred and twenty-five amp service that run over the sewer coming from their building, but I don't know if it's high into the generator or if we would overload it or if that was something, something to have to discuss.
So we're looking at a building, possibly a generator and a heat and air unit to keep the equipment at a certain temperature, you know, so it doesn't overheat or, or whatever. If, if y'all are willing to do so.
What's the, what's the, um, the pros and cons as far as utilizing the, the building and, and stuff that Sand Hill has in place versus putting our own building there?
You utilize Sand Hill's buildings, you're gonna have to come up with another ice bridge, or seven sections of ice bridges to go across two buildings. We have more old engine inside of theirs, um, I haven't even seen the inside of their, their building yet. The other thing is that they would have to allow us access, give twenty-four hour access to it, you know, and so if there is a problem, you know, we would be able to get in there to it. We go out, you know, if there's a problem, that, that doesn't matter, you know, put a snow trail, and there's a problem, we're out. So I don't know how Sand Hills is with, you know, getting people into the, uh, you know, letting people into the-
What, what kinda, what kinda expense would it be for the ice bridges, what?
Several thousand, that's, and honestly, it would be cheaper for the dual building. They already have a concrete pad there in place where the building can sit on. They're only, the, the good thing about the building is that if you have a problem with it or whatnot, you know, you can always move it. You know, Sand Hills comes up later and says that they're doing away with the tower or whatnot, you know, you can always move the building.
Is, is there a dollar figure on the ice bridges that you would guess of what it would cost? You, you talking about like a storage building?
Mhm. Mhm. And Benny told me, he said, I, I feel like I could build us a good one for like fifteen hundred bucks, or cheap, or less. But I've got these guys here today, if y'all got any questions, I'm scared I couldn't answer for you.
Mr. Kearns, with, in my small brain, and it is small, the hundred watt radio is not gonna pull that many amps, or the repeater. How many amps will it pull?
It's not gonna pull that many, but it's, uh, off the top of my head, I, I don't wanna throw a number out, but it shouldn't pull a whole lot. A hundred and twenty-five amp service that they have there would be, would be-
Be more than sufficient. It's gonna pull, in my estimation, anywhere between one and, just say one and five amps. It won't pull that.
No, it's gonna pull more than that.
He said more, it, more than that.
If we can, if there's a way that we can tie in with their permission.
Right.
That's what I'd rather do, because they gonna be testing the thing, this gonna come on and off, and, but then I think we need to have an agreement with, long-term with Sand Hills through Mr. Ruffner, that we got access and to their generator and to that tower. I don't want them to come up in five years and say, we need space. I think we need to protect ourselves. And I would like you to reach out to, uh, the CEO up there and ask about the generator and see what it would take to put the switches station in for that. I think it'd be at a minimal cost. This versus eight hundred, and I'm not saying that I'm completely turned off to eight hundred, but if this is a cheaper alternative that is reliable to protect these guys and give us effective communications, then I think we need to explore it. Any of the old cabling and, and stuff that you could use, we're gonna put it on the water tower. But now, it's so much taller, you go out to buy all new coaxials and-
If we were going to the Pageland water tank, there's the electronic equipment that ties it back into dispatch.
Right.
That's the added cost, we have to add in going to the High Point Tower.
I wouldn't-
We, we basically don't have anything up there.
Okay.
But I feel like we're getting a lot better signal if we move up to High Point.
Oh, without a doubt.
Outta town.
That's the reason I suggested that, start with, and, uh, I'm gonna leave it up to you with the administration, with the, the cost. I wouldn't climb the damn tower for what they charging.
My question is-
The only thing I'd like to add is, I mean, obviously with the High Point Tower, six are issue of page, okay? But the other issue is, we, we can't truly give you- But the other issue is, we, we can't truly give you the definitive answer that our radios are fixed. They're, they're working on it, obviously, and it is a lot better, but it's not handing off like it's supposed to from one repeater to the next. Which then they started yesterday, reprogramming my walkie-talkies, so I can't, we can't sit here today and tell you that it's a hundred percent better because it's still sometimes struggling of letting go. Give you an example, if I'm in Pageant and I come to Chesterfield, I'm a repeater still stuck on Pageant. And they all, they had, they've got a fix for that, but it's sort of been dragging out, and I'm just stuck in the issue with the Mackbee repeater. Okay? Just give you, you know, people have to hear true stories and understand the need, okay? About two weeks ago, we had a deputy find a finger on Dobbs Mill Road, okay? And his radio hadn't been reprogrammed yet, so it was, you know, so, like, when I called and said, hey, the repeater's not working, and they asked for what channel it was. Well, I don't know what channel it on, if they're supposed to be, until they fixed it, they're supposed to be on whatever area you are, you're supposed to flip to that channel, okay? Instead of the wrong one where it's supposed to hand it off. Where he's having to find his finger on the side road, and he can't get out of the way of the door on Dobbs Mill Road. So he has to get the nine-one-one call and go to his car. Now, keep in mind, if they're by itself, he wouldn't have anybody to send to his car. If he gets eight hundred radio, he'll call for his. And actually, he weren't getting the strength of the herd, he got bit loaded in the mouth above his mouth, so he's having a hole in his throat. So they do have a fix for that, but the reason I bring it up, we need to start speeding up, we can't worry about the Mackbee repeater. Because if it has to be re, reprogrammed when that's put up eventually, then we'll just have to reprogram it. You know, I had a deputy find another finger, one of the reasons dropping out of the middle of traffic on fifty-two. It's a customer, and keep in mind, the repeater's a mile or so through the woods, and he can't get back to twenty-four. They tell him to call on his telephone. So, and that's an issue with the handing off. Like I said, if, if we can get everybody on board to, let's go ahead and reprogram his radio, and we gotta do it again with Mackbee, then that's fine. Then we can sit here and tell you, then we have fixed our problem. Because I will tell you, when they climbed the last quick, when John Colby got murdered, I could talk. I went to that driveway where he died, and I could talk. So if we did that accomplish, then we've done something. That has been twenty-five years, and it's time to put this cannon on the shelf instead of keeping it. But anyway, if we can just maybe get with them, then we can sit here and tell you wholeheartedly, y'all have fixed your problem. And I feel like you want to, and yeah, the Pageant, the Patrick Town, that will encompass Tony Bill and all that, and that would fix our problem. These fellows are working hard, I mean, I'm giving credit, we just got there, and they never thought the Mackbee situation happened. I, I wouldn't have been going, but we can't keep waiting for these things to get reprogrammed. Because I don't, I can't sit here and tell them that, you know, I thought I was gonna ride the repeater, because you were stuck on another repeater. I mean, literally, they have fixed mine, but I mean, I went to Pageant and was sitting at the county jail, and it was showing that I was on the west repeater when the east, when the repeater Chesterfield crossed street. So it obviously should've went to Chesterfield repeater. But they've got a fix for that, we just gotta get it pushed out somehow, some way.
Now, with that being said, the Mackbee repeater, I spoke with the mayor the other night, and they are actually going after the contractor who cut the repeater, I mean, cut all that off the tank and, and lowered it. He said they didn't feel like they should be, you know, the radio companies don't feel like they should, I feel like, don't feel like we should, so I think that's the right move, but in the meantime, I'm holding these guys money, because that is in there, that this, this system is supposed to roam and, and trade as they move around the county. So I'm holding their money because the system doesn't roam. That's the only leg I've got to stand on to hold their money. Now, that being said, we're talking a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars I'm holding of their money. Unless y'all see, otherwise, I would like to at least give them a portion of that, knowing that it's out of their hands, that this system is not working because of that. I spoke with Miss Stanley, and if y'all are okay with it, I would like to give them a portion of that money. I know they're probably needing it also, but, uh, until we solve that. My question back to you, is there another alternative in Mackbee area that we can go to another site that we don't have to deal with this issue?
Well, we got the, the go-ahead, go-ahead, put the building back yet, Mack.
Uh-huh.
Whenever I talk to Chad, they were supposed to get the, uh, get the stuff together with the crews or whatnot, and get it ready to move over. And there was a, there was a problem with Sand Hills, where they damaged the power, um, and they were working on the tower. So that would have to get fixed, get the power and stuff ran back in, but that's, you know, if your county guys can do that.
Right, but are y'all gonna, are y'all gonna do it without a green light, knowing that y'all gonna get your money? And see, that's, that's the issue. We can fight this thing for a while, determine who's gonna pay the bill to put that repeater back up in Mackbee. That's, that's the issue we gonna run into, and it falls right back, the system can't be complete. And I don't blame them until that repeater's up and they can connect all the dots.
Right now, in, in Mackbee, you're basically sitting on a, a fifteen foot six pipe, um, you know, it's barely over the top of the building. And, you know, Mackbee Water Tank, you're looking at, you know, probably two hundred foot. So, uh, you know, definitely a length over the better, and Mackbee wants to get that back built, but you're, you're only covering the town right now. Basically, when you're running off free, you're the whole county.
So that's, we're, we're kind of at a standstill until Mackbee figures out what they're gonna do, how they gonna pay the bill to the radio outfit.
What, what option do we have? I mean, I can't see us sitting around waiting on somebody to litigate, uh, when?
It's not fair to them, it's not fair to them, and it's not fair to us.
Yeah, well, my main concern is law enforcement not being able to be, be able to talk. And also, I wanna add that, uh, the building thing, I, I don't know if I would have enough details on it to be able to make a decision. I think it would be great if we could figure out a way to utilize the, the building and the air conditioning and the generator that's already at High Point, uh, be less maintenance for us down the road, uh, in an agreement. Um, you know, if it takes more wire, coax, or whatever, without hard numbers, it's hard to say, but I think that's the way I would see it. My next question is, if we did go ahead and move forward on the High Point repeater, what kind of timeframe would we be looking at? Because my opinion, time's at the essence, uh, when it comes to this.
I can start the license today, we could have the sub-monitoring, uh, next couple of weeks. Get the power through them, I've already got them done, table and stuff there, and we're talking a couple of months, probably about two or three months.
It is the, would the holdup be the, the licensing, would that be what's gonna, would take the longest?
Yes, especially at that height here on the one, just clear frequency, um, so we will want to pay at least one hundred per week, um, and make sure that it is a clear frequency before we get to that.
That'd also take care of what Mr. Bone's talking about, as far as the roaming.
Yes, sir.
And once that gets done, it's like a, I'm assuming, a cellular phone that will go from one tower to the next, and that's not happening. But there is a fix for that.
There is, Spence, has your been working?
Oh, yeah, I mean, they, they tell like twenty-five pounds, I don't know, they want to, so they work, it's just, we can't get none of the rest of them done, because of all that. They got a cure for sickness, they just can't put it out until the other situation. Or they'll have to touch on the radio again, once Mackbee goes back up.
Gotcha.
They'll touch it one time and set that for a fix.
Would it, would it be a problem for y'all to go ahead and, and, uh, reprogram all the radios to make them where the roaming works now, like you have done with Spence's? And then when the, the Mackbee situation gets resolved, then reprogram them again?
So every time you, you add another slide, we have to reprogram, being opposite, you have to kind of look at what the strength you're getting between this hour and this hour, and you'll determine that the radio is a shift from this hour back to this one. And, I mean, I can't do that unless the, the, with the, uh, uh.
I'm, I'm certainly not a radio person, but since you're working on that, the Mackbee tower, I would, I would like to see us as a council. Go ahead and foot this bill with the understanding that you can get one through the town of Mackbee, that they're got, they're gonna be responsible if they can't get the contract paid.
I mean, the mayor said he was gonna go after, he hoped to get me to that answer before today, so I told him I had to meet. He, they're going after the contractor. Is there a way? We put the money upfront, give them the green light to do it, how can we go after our money back?
That'd be kind of a subrogation situation. But again, if there's, if there's not any recovery.
Right.
You're getting it, right.
If you're not getting it.
But then, I'm assuming this company was licensed and bonded, that's what I ask.
But I mean, that does, you know, if they're, they've got a dispute over whether who's responsible, there's no guarantees that the company can end up having to pay. That's what I'm saying, if the county pays it, I, I can't sit here and say that there would be guaranteed that you get it back.
What, what is the, what is the cost of putting?
Eighteen thousand and something was that quote that y'all give to town of Mackbee, correct?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, we're, we're kind of holding out fixing a problem that's jeopardizing lives over eighteen thousand dollars?
That's what it sounds like.
That's, that's enough, that's ridiculous.
And plus you're gonna have to reprogram those radios again at another cost.
I think, I think it needs to be fixed, and we'll figure out on the backside what we gotta do.
I mean, that's kind of. We're depending on you guys to fix it, correct?
Smallwood.
Well, I mean, so, okay, so, if we do free this money up, and we go ahead and cover this, it doesn't matter to me, honestly, whether, I mean, we need to get that money back, I get that, that's problem B.
Mm-hmm.
Let's take care of problem A, and we're gonna hold you accountable to fix problem A, right? So, if we freed the money up to do it, I mean, I don't, I don't know if I know every, this seems like a rabbit hole that we could get really, really, really deep in, far beyond most people's understanding, including my own.
And it could drag out for a long time trying to figure out, that's why I would like to see, let's go ahead and give them the green light to do that. If y'all will allow me to give them the green light to do the High Point, proceed there with the, except, I mean, let me meet with Sand Hill, anything we can combine that doesn't create a monthly charge for us, that they're willing to do with us, proceed in that direction there.
Whether it's the building, generators, or whatever.
Their pricing gonna change by turning them loose there, the only thing that's gonna change is, can we do it with Sand Hill's equipment, or we need to do it with our own equipment?
Plus, you're gonna hold back some money too.
Right, only thing that's changing if, if, a little bit more coax.
If you go on other forty foots, you know, with the power, yeah, I don't, I don't have that.
But you can start applying for the license, doing all that, in the meantime, if it's, we talking three months, I, we'll have some meetings I can come back to y'all with, some numbers.
If you can expedite it, that would be great.
That's correct.
I'm assuming you're still gonna hold back some of this money.
Right, now.
Because that, that is a great incentive for anybody.
Well, that gives them, if, if y'all gonna cover the eighteen for Mackbee right now, that gives them the green light. That's the only thing to holding their money up right now, is that Mackbee repeater and looping everything together, correct? And then I can, but I'll give them a portion now.
Okay, that's our problem. On the technical side, you're gonna put a repeater up there in Pageant? You gotta replace the tower and everything in Mackbee. We're on UHF frequencies, what size coax are you feeding them things?
Four E's and seven H's.
Geez, it's supposed to be inching five H's according to their standards. Now, we got that on our ham repeaters.
Yes, we're in E's and seven H's.
Yeah, yeah, that's the problem, how long have you had it?
What, seven H's?
Yeah, laying around, or you gotta buy it fresh.
I just got a fresh roll in about two months ago. Six hundred foot.
And you're gonna use that on UHF?
Yes, sir, we have been using it for years.
I've been using ninety-nine thirteen on HF for years, and it's not big enough. You know, we need to change with times, we need high gain antennas on our cars. We need a bigger coax to feed your antennas on your repeaters. Because we're losing, how much wattage we got at the antenna right now?
Well, you're gonna be looking around a hundred watts going to the antenna.
Going to the antenna?
And we're putting a eleven dB gain antenna.
Okay, what kind of output do you have at the antenna?
Apparently, it's under a hundred watts. Every three dBs on a double, so you're looking, I'm gonna estimate, or, uh, probably around two hundred watts, three hundred watts.
All right, and how much are you losing in that seven H hardline? From the radio to the antenna? I know it's minimum loss, but when you do the formula, uh, a hundred watts, it's probably gonna come around seventy-four watts at the antenna. So then you gotta have the gain from the antennas to make up for it. If we went one inch, you know, go ahead and laugh, you have no radios too, buddy. You're losing on the coax, you give it up a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty feet, you have dB loss at the coax. All right, putting a heavier antenna onto it to bring back your gain, fine, but I can sit with a handheld on Route One at Kershaw County Bridge, key that handheld up, and I can hit the man in Florence, I can hit him when he's in Pageant with a five watt handheld. I could sit with my own radio and program it and key it up for twenty-four hundred, I don't even hear them at Kershaw County Bridge. So what's going on? Come on, we got to change with time. Do the radio, does, does Motorola have GPS capability?
Yes, sir, they do have.
Well, how come we don't have them activated in the patrol cars?
Because I've had it.
That's something we sorely need.
They've been trying to do ABL for years, I mean, even the EMS and stuff like that's been trying to do ABL.
Yeah, and they've been crying to me too, they don't have coverage in EMS. Fire, they lose coverage going down the street. You know, come on, we, we need to improve our radio system. And use an antiquated program in equipment. You know, Motorola, they're the worst company in the world to start with. All right, they, they, they've lost their edge probably fifteen years ago. They, they lost out, because now you gotta go to Motorola monthly to keep up with the radios. They think they can hold everything to their chest. We need to advance our systems. They shouldn't have to, down by me, if they're out there in the woods searching, well, when they were searching for tater, if it wasn't for the helicopter and the radios back and forth, they couldn't talk. I could sit at my house with three point eight watts, I hit the Sheraw repeater, I hit the Pageant repeater, I even hit the Florence repeater on top of the hospital. I can do that on four hundred megahertz, I can do that on a hundred and sixty meg, a hundred and forty megahertz, with three point eight watts. How many radios does the Sheriff's Department have that can't do that? That six inch antenna is useless. All right, yeah, fine, Spence is up there on top of the tower, of course you're gonna get out. You can go to the fire tower on one forty-five and get out. But it's not reliable. We need to increase what we have. Eight hundred megahertz is out of the question in this county, it's horrible. Even Highway Patrol told me the same thing. They have to time, they gotta go on their phone to contact people. I hear it all the time on the radio. We can't hear you, we can't hear you, can you repeat? We can't hear you, give me a twenty-one. I hear it all the time. So what are we gonna do about that? Is that just because of the one repeater in Mackbee, and we don't have the higher one in Pageant?
You're trying to cover eight hundred square miles, right now.
Yeah. Well, I can cover two repeaters each end of the county with three point eight watts. I can sit in, right over here in Chesterfield with my handheld, and I can hit the repeater in Florence at the hospital. I could switch it over and hit the repeater at their, just, their building over in Florence. Why can't we do that here? Hell, the jail couldn't even talk from me to you. You know, that, that was a horrible situation, they're locked in the whole night.
Ben, Ben, um, I think that these guys over here have, have done what the county has paid them for.
Mm-hmm.
I understand that there's probably other situations, but I think we need to address that a little bit different time than right now.
That's fine, do what you want.
I mean, I'm not suggesting anything.
No, I'm just suggesting we need to upgrade. That's all I'm suggesting.
I understand, and I appreciate your comments on that.
I just wanna know what a life is worth. I just wanna know what a life is worth in this county. That's all I wanna know. If I'm on patrol and I'm out the other side of the state forest, over towards, uh, where Mr. Eubanks resides, and I got a situation out there and I try to call on the radio, nobody answers because nobody can hear me. What are we doing about it?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to hear our administrators' recommendation again. So will you move it forward? What's your recommendation?
Mine would be to, Ben, that Mackey repeater is a, a big issue and it could drag out for a long time. If y'all would cover the cost of them installing, putting the Mackey repeater back up where it came from and let us try to recoup our money down at a later time with ever have, whether it be the contractor to cut it down or the town of Mackey or what. Uh, go ahead and cover that bill or quote for them for Mackey, the eighteen thousand and something. Plus, do, give me the green light, the quote that they give me to put a repeater on the High Point Tower in Pageland at, of the sum of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety cents right now. Pending, we've got, let me talk with Sand Hill Telephone, uh, to see if they're willing to let us use some of their equipment that's already in place there. If not, we will have to buy additional stuff there, but that, giving them the green light with this would, would allow them to do their license and apply for them that's gonna be time consuming. Uh, let them go ahead and do that, cause I feel like that's a, a must anyway. And then I can bring, come back to y'all at a later date to say, look, Sand Hill's agreed and we feel like we can do it, but it's gonna cost more, a little more coax or whatever for them and whatever this thing they're talking about. But I can bring that at a later date back to y'all. Uh, but it gives them the green light to go ahead and proceed to get some of the things that's gonna be time consuming there.
Mr. Chairman, I, I couldn't even think about repeating his motion. But I think we need to move forward. He spent a lot of time in trying to resolve this problem we've been fighting for years. My motion is that we follow the recommendation of the administrator and proceed. I put that in the form of a motion.
I just have one question now. I'm not a, an expert on radios. I know very little about them. My question is, is this going to resolve the problems that we're having? Because I thought the last time we did something, it was gonna fix the problem. Is this gonna fix the problem?
And that's where I go to show y'all this map here with the five mile rings on it. The only issue I see then would be between Mackey and Charol. You've got a big hole right there that I feel like, now that being said, that gets us, if, if y'all, are we having issues in that area right now? Now, I don't know if, if, if y'all wanna take that next step or what, or, or see what it will cost to go that next step there. But I feel like if y'all approve this, that will be the only hole that's left right there within our county that, that, that gives them a good system to do. Now, that being said, we, we put this system, we, we this deep in this system, they can communicate. I feel like they gonna have a good system in place, especially if y'all down the road put that tower or repeater between Mackey and Charol. Then you can always continue on over the eight hundred system or any other system that you want. We can still, and we can go after grants or whatever to allow them to do another system down the road that allows them to talk all over the state. I mean, that still doesn't, this still doesn't hold up that easy. For their safety and all that, I feel like this is the best, quickest way we can get them protected out there right now.
Sheriff Streeter, are you satisfied with this?
Mr. Chairman, what I would like to see, and I think all is discussed in there, is something to fix the radio system right now. Cause we wanted, Captain Vaughn told you about two of them recently, were dead because of our talk, and he killed them. Cat's trotting. Um, uh, we did have, um, we did fix it right now for all for safety issues. Just all the, the person, what price you gonna put on, on a dead man's life out there. And I appreciate what you're doing, appreciate the help, appreciate these guys kind of, kind of helping us out. Even, even though that's the case here, I am still gonna put proposals together for anybody in U.A. here. And I know it's not this year, next year, maybe even next, but I'm gonna put proposals together for the death of lookout, for funding opportunities and stuff like that. Um, I'm not gonna stop trying to do it and get radio system. But I, what you're doing today, we appreciate it, but we want, we want a meeting.
There is a system out there that can be activated in thirty days for here and it gives us the option for eight hundred.
Okay. I, I think while we're talking about it, I think I, I would love to, to have the information if, according to this map, if it's correct and that's an area that, that we're lacking. Uh, I don't think that the, the people in, in mine and Mr. Rivers and Mr. Miller's district are any more important than those, those folks down there in those areas. I'd like to see some numbers of, uh, if Sand Hill has a tower in that, in that missing spot and if there, if we can get a number of what we can do, to do the same thing down there, I think it definitely be in our best interest to have something on the table. Let's just, let's just go ahead and see what we can do and, and move forward.
Oh, yeah, I've got them. But, yeah, yeah, they got that.
Okay, we've had a motion and seconded a discussion.
One more quick question. Uh, Mr. Rivers, I believe you were the one who made a motion?
Yes, sir.
I know nothing about radios, okay? And I don't know how much experience Tim got with radios. Uh, he shaved his head like a dilligoo. But now, within his spending limits, don't you think it would be wise for this county, if this needed, to give him the authorization to, to hire a consultant that can help him with this?
Chairman, if I may ask, sir? I think we've been relying on too many consultants now. We need to move forward to eliminate this problem. We got, we got officers out there trying to do a job in their handicap because they don't have the equipment that will be liable enough for them to, to do their job. The reason I made the motion, or offered to, I didn't even try to repeat his motion, but we need to move forward.
I agree. That is, my question is, do you think he needs some help?
Well.
Quick help.
I think he can, he can get all the help he needs. He's got a lot more contacts than you and I do. We might not want to admit it. But Tim's on top of things. Us rely on him to fix this situation. If not, at least improve it. I'm sure this is not gonna be a cure-all for what we're doing here this morning. We've been fighting this thing for years, folks. Let's go ahead and move forward. And I'm, I'm, I, I agree with Ethan. If we've got a, if we've got a known area in this county that we don't have, let's go ahead and pursue getting that coverage. We don't need to have voids in our system if we can avoid it. So, Mr. Chairman, I call for the question. I think we discussed it enough.
I've got, I've got one more question. And, and I only say this because I wanna know, do we need to restate the motion? Cause I do think what Mr. Ford said is accurate. I do think we may as well go ahead and pursue that. I know this may not be the be all, end all to our problems. I know we need to keep pursuing, but what we gotta do is have a fix right now that we can afford to fix right now. Cause whether we want to admit it or not, money does matter. Not as much as a life, but it is an issue, right? Um, so I'd like to see us get this up and running as quickly as possible. That buys us some time to at least pursue a better option if it's affordable down the road. Maybe it's a year, two years, whatever it is. Do we need to, oh, do we need to restate that into the motion? Does Mr. Eubanks find that he needs some help consulting it?
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll agree to add that to the motion. Let's go ahead and try to eliminate the problems we presently have. And I think the, our leader here, he's got, he's on the right track. He's been in contact with a lot of different folks trying to eliminate this problem. We've been, we all got opinions and I'm certainly no radio man. By no means, but there's a solution out there, but we just need to follow it and get the best service we possibly can for all the citizens of Chesterfield County. Not just our Sheriff's Department, they're extremely important. But fire, EMS, all the citizens of this county need to have good reliable communication. So I should go ahead and call for the question. This move with.
All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
All right, Mr. Eubanks, you've got your marching orders.
All right, thank y'all.
Okay, there is a need to go into executive session. Mr. Ruffner, would you give us an explanation of that?
Yes, sir. It's my understanding pursuant to South Carolina Code Section thirty dash four dash seventy subsection A one that, uh, council may enter into executive session for discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of employees. And as noted on the agenda, the, uh, council may take action by voting upon those matters after exiting executive session.
Uh, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Some move.
Gerald? Second by Ms. Burns. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. We're gonna make a take.